Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite in justice.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Norby.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Councilmember McKenzie.
Here.
Councilmember Schwer.
Here.
Mayor Mungy.
Here. Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
So move, Councilmember Schwer.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Woods, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Consent agenda, item A, approve of minutes, October 7th, 2025. Item B, general claims of $1,833,263.77. Item C, HRA claims of $15,468.67. Item D, resolution accepting donations for September of 2025. Item E, application for temporary on-sale liquor license for exempt permit for the North Star Museum of Boy Scouting and Girl Scouting, Saturday, October 25th of 2025. Item F, resolution, the 2026 SCORE grant application. Item G, cancellation of November 4th, 2025 city council workshop and regular meeting. And item H, special event permit for Veterans Day celebration.
Thank you very much. Would anybody like to pull anything at this time? If not, can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So move, Councilmember Schwer.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Norby, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, we don't have anybody, but there's a young man, and would you come up here and introduce yourself?
We're gonna push you on the spot.
And just tell us why you showed up tonight. We're glad to have a visitor. Come up to the microphone.
[laughing].
How are you tonight?
Shouldn't have sat down.
What's your name?
My name's Andrew, and I'm here for a poli sci class assignment.
Awesome, okay.
Yeah.
Nice.
Where do you go to school?
Yeah, I go to North High, but I take PSO at Century.
Oh, good for you.
Nice.
Any questions, anything we can help with?
Yeah.
Not so far, no.
Okay.
Well, I'm glad you're here.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. All right.
All right, next up, we have public hearings. We have one item this evening, special assessment hearing for unpaid bills and authorization the City of North St. Paul to certify to the county auditor's office, all unpaid fees. Anything you'd like to add to that, Dan?
Uh, yeah, it's good. Good night. Open the public meeting.
Oh, open the public. What?
It's a public hearing, so it has to be.
It's a public hearing.
Oh, public hearing. I'm sorry. I got lost there. 6:39, open to the public meeting, please.
I think city managers kind of already talked about it. This is open to the public regarding delinquent assessments. It's for Maplewood properties, North St. Paul properties that are built by Oakdale, I think there's just one, and then there's the North St. Paul properties. On top, there's a summary of the amounts that are outstanding at this point in time, and then the interest, and then the balance with the, with interest. Individuals were all, all received a letter that was sent to them with the, with the notice, and they have until November 21st. If you remember when we went to city council to authorize this public hearing 30 days ago, the number was much higher. It's gone down. People have already started paying. It'll go down again until November 21st, and then if there's any public with any comments, we'll, we'll ask that. And then after their comments, and you've taken any comments into consideration, there's three resolutions that need to be adopted, then gives the city manager and myself the authority to then certify whatever's remaining on any of these properties to Ramsey County. I'm sure.
We have nobody here for the public hearing, so.
I think we close the public hearing, and then we take votes on the three resolutions.
Close the public hearing. Do you wanna read off?
Absolutely. So the first one is the assessment resolutions for the Maplewood properties. Looking for a resolution on that.
Anybody move?
So moved.
So move, Councilmember Schwer.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Norby, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Next up is the resolution for assessment resolution for North St. Paul properties built by City of Oakdale.
All right. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Councilmember Woods?
Second.
Second, Councilmember McKenzie, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next resolution is the assessment resolution for North St. Paul properties.
Okay. Motion, please.
So moved.
So move, Woods?
I'll second.
Second, McKenzie, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We got one city business action item, and that is the park rental fee and policy updates for 2026. We have community development director Ken here to address you. Yes, he did.
There you go.
Have a good night, Dan.
Thanks, Stan. Appreciate it.
You can't leave.
Yeah, he's making a run for it, I guess. That's his run. That's it.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Members of the council, presenting this on behalf of the Parks Commission and Sarah Lang in my department, who really did most of the heavy lifting on this. I want to give them full credit. But we, we as a staff, and then through the Parks Commission, reviewed the park rental policy and the rental rates, and are proposing some changes for consideration by the council tonight. There's a lot of information in the report on comparing what our rates are and what other cities are doing, but first of all, what I have on the screen, which is the first page in the report, outlines the number of rentals and the rental rates, and then the column in the middle is the number of issues. And what that is are times when people have not received their deposit back, and that can rate, because they stayed past 10 o'clock, the policy is a firm, you need to be out of the building completely by 10 o'clock, not start cleaning up at 10 o'clock. You gotta be gone by 10 o'clock, and clean, have all your garbage bagged up, or recycling put out, et cetera, et cetera. So there, there are times when people stay too late, and the cleaning crew gets there, maybe they give them five or 10 minutes, and then if not, the police are called, and they get to encourage them to leave at that point, and hopefully there's not an issue. Sometimes decorations are left, or they're not completely removed, and so there's extra cleaning required, so then we hold some or all the deposit on those kind of cases. And, and the two tables there, that again are on the screen are, one is for Casey Lake, which has most of the rentals, and then some of those at Housie as well, and these are for the enclosed shelter buildings, not the open shelters. Don't really have many problems that I'm aware of with those two. The second part, so again, most times, we don't have a problem. People get their money back, it's all good. But so for Casey Lake, for the first nine months of the year, we had six instances where there were issues. For Housie, in the same time period, there was five issues. So some of the people did not get their deposit back, as I said. Then we also looked into what are the costs for having the two shelter buildings, and this is on the next page of the report, both staff-wise and capital costs, and some of these are estimates from the other staff in the city helped put these numbers together, and broke it down, the cost per reservation to have these facilities, including capital costs or not including capital costs. And what you'll find is, it's not a moneymaker for the city, there's some costs, but it's a service the city chooses to provide. Just like having a park, you have to mow the grass, plow the snow, there's a cost. It's part of having public facilities. The most, I think, I think the most telling thing is table four in the report, which I put up on the screen, and it goes on to the next page as well, is, again, Sarah's credit, she did a lot of research, reached out to other cities to find comparable buildings or facilities to both Casey Lake and Housie, and their sizes, how many seated people they could put in, their hours of operation, they're available, the rates for weekdays and weekend rates for rentals. And one thing, too, we should point out, in our city, when a park facility is rented out, they're renting it for the entire day. We don't divide up. There are some cities you can do it for four hours and then another four hours, but we don't have the staff to turn over and check a building in between, so they get the whole day. So if they plan their day right, getting done by 10 o'clock shouldn't be an issue, because they could have been there at 8 o'clock in the morning and planned accordingly, but that's, that's a them problem, I guess would be a nice way to put it. And then we also asked, is alcohol allowed? And you'll see from the table that many places do not allow any alcohol in their buildings, some only with a special event permit, some with, but not in glass, and so that, that I found, to me, was interesting, and I think to the Parks Commission as well. And currently, we, when we, when they reserve a park, they're asked, are they going to have alcohol or not? If they are, then we collect a $150 deposit, which, if things go well, and there's not a problem, is they get that deposit back. If there's a problem, extra mess, not leaving on time, part of that deposit, if not all of it, is kept by the city, especially for the extra costs. So all that said, we are, then we got into, should we change the rates? How should, if so, how should we change these, change the rates? And there's, so two things for your consideration this evening, I'll kind of jump to the second part. We're proposing the increase to the deposit fees, $50 for each event, and then also changing the $150 alcohol deposit to a $100 alcohol fee. So it's an extra fee, it's not a deposit, and then that the city just keeps. No matter, if you're having alcohol, you pay extra to have that. They still pay the regular deposit, but there's not the $150 extra deposit for alcohol. And this was something that was brought up at the Parks Commission, being by Councilmember Schwer and the Parks Commission. It wasn't staff's idea initially, but the more we thought about it, and they had the discussion at the Parks meeting, they thought that was a better way to go. So that's why this proposal is.
And we did that because we are, I don't think that there's anywhere in the Twin Cities, and Sarah did extensive research, so I do have to credit Sarah for doing all of this work, but I do not believe that there is a location within the Twin Cities, and if anything, it's a few that allow alcohol in their facilities. And that's where we had indicated that because of the additional garbage, and, you know, whether it's bottles, or it's, it's just additional pickup, that we should add, and if we're gonna let you have alcohol, why don't we, we need to charge you for it. I mean, if things got out of hand, well, then we have our police to come, but it's still something as a fee, if we're gonna allow that.
Thank you, yes. And, and then the second thing we've incorporated into tonight is, so that, that's fees, jumping ahead now to the second part, we as a staff, and I think the Parks Commission was involved with this, are proposing some updates to the park rental policy, and the biggest changes, I'm gonna scroll to those, is we're really emphasizing the point about alcohol. For example, if they don't say in their initial request for the facility that they're going to have alcohol, but alcohol is found on the site, and this is bolded here, the city will withhold the full rental deposit. You don't.
Get it back.
You don't get it back. You don't get, oh, so I didn't know. Well, we're trying to make it really clear in the policy, which everyone gets if they rent a park or sign up to rent a park, that that's, that's important to the city, and we also try to emphasize more clearly, and this is here, completely out of the park building by 10 p.m. It's, again, you don't start cleaning up at 10, you're gone and out by 10. And Sarah and the staff tell the people, when they do their reservations, these are the rules, and verbally tell them, they get this in writing, like to think there shouldn't be any excuses for not knowing, but we know how the public is.
Plus, the parks close at 10, so.
Well, right.
Just the one, it's, everything is done at 10.
I think they should make a mention that the cleanup should be starting at 9, so they are out of there by 9:45, so they have that 15 minutes to clear out completely. That, yes, that would be ideal. And, yeah, those are, so those are the major changes in the policy itself. So this is, again, a guide that we give to all park rentals or prospective park renters to know, these are the rules. You're gonna rent our parks. So the action for, for what we're requesting tonight is really twofold. There's a resolution that adopts the new fees going forward, and we'll work, if approved, we'll work those into the new fee schedule for 2026, that we'll be bringing forth to the council, probably the first meeting in December, and, and then approving the park rental policy that I've outlined tonight. The reason we wanted to get this to you now is that park rentals for 2026 will start around December 1st. We want to get these new fees and policies in place, be able to advertise them before then, so we don't have people renting, thinking they're under the old rules, and now we changed the rules, so we want to take care of this all ahead of time, and so that's where we're at. I don't really have any more. I did find out before the meeting, just now, that Laura, the Parks Chair, was going to be here, but she has a sick child, so she's not available to speak to this, but I think Councilmember Schwer was there. She has more knowledge. If there's any other questions, otherwise, I will take your questions.
I have a question when it comes to, we did the change last year, kind of in an emergency. Was it, was it this year or last year? I can't remember. We changed from 11 o'clock to 10 o'clock?
It was mid-year, yeah.
You did it this year?
Yeah.
Time goes by so fast. And we were gonna come, and we were gonna look to see if 10 o'clock was workable, or at that time. So do we have any information about 10 o'clock, as far as that been working out at the parks as far as, because I know some of them are dust, there's a bunch of different ways people are doing it. Have we found out that 10 o'clock is working?
It hasn't been an issue, and I believe we only had one cancellation from people who did have rented due to that, so it hasn't been.
So we're comfortable with 10 p.m. still as a closed time?
Yes.
Okay. That's why I wanted to make sure before, because I know we were in discussion of that.
And since you brought up that, that does open in December 1st, I just want to add, that is for North St. Paul residents, though. Yeah.
For anybody that's watching that doesn't live in.
Right, right.
And people do. We got, we got a group.
Great point to make, though.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions. One, in regards to that $100, well, I guess, the alcohol use, and just in general, how is that policed? Is it based on when the cleaning crew policed, in quotes? Is it based on when the cleaning crew comes in to clean up, if they find empty bottles, you know, empty cans, that kind of thing? Is that evident?
Yes.
Okay.
And or worst case, if the police are actually called, because.
Okay. So there's not like a city employee that will pop by to check on things or anything like that?
It's an on-your-honor system.
Okay. And then the other thing is the $100 fee. Changing it from a deposit to a fee, do we feel like that's gonna prevent, or I shouldn't say prevent, but encourage people to lie about alcohol use? And, you know, if they were depositing 100, if it was a $150 deposit, and I knew that, you know, were I responsible, I would get that $150 back. I would have no problem saying, yes, I'm gonna have alcohol there. If I'm having to pay $100 just to have alcohol there, I guess I would be more encouraged to, so to speak, lie about it, and then just hide any evidence of it, if I know I'm not getting that money back.
I mean, I hear you on that piece.
So.
And I get it. This is something that Parks and Rec thought, let's try it, can always change it next year. What does that look like? You know, again, and I agree with you, if I know I'm responsible, why, why would I do that?
Right.
Um, but given the fact that we are, there's, again, I can't even name a city that has alcohol in it. We are the only one that I know of that offers the ability to have alcohol and not have security or anything like that. That's where Parks and Rec had thought, you know what, let's, let's try this, and see, see what this looks like. It's trial year, can always be changed next year for 2027. That's the glory of these park fees and revisiting them.
Or it can be taken away altogether if it's an issue.
Correct.
Yeah.
Probably with Casey, you know, they, somebody rents it there, but the, the bathrooms are open to the public. What if somebody comes in there and throws a beer bottle inside the bathroom when they go use the restroom?
Well, they, if I may, Mr. Mayor, they have a chance to clean up before our cleaning crew gets there, and they, I believe, have rooms and.
Oh, they don't clean up the bathroom, though. I mean, that's something where it's open both sides, so I just, a little concerned where if somebody just goes in there, has a drink in the park and throws it in there, that, you know, is that gonna be an issue?
I'll speak for Ryan. I guess if they really want to contest it, if there's video evidence of who's doing what, they can, the camera footage can be reviewed, maybe they can make a determination, city can.
Not that we have a camera in the bathroom.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Outside.
Yeah, let's be clear.
Yeah, but I just, you know, that's good. Usually when you rent something, it's all yours. This one, you know, they're coming in and out. You use the restroom for the whole park, so.
There's probably a difference between a broken beer bottle in the bathroom versus.
Correct.
30 beer cans in the recycling bin, so to speak.
Sometimes people finish it up, throw it in.
I, I. One thing I'm gonna do for information for you is, I would like to make that comparison of times that we withheld deposits to find out if they did have an alcohol fee for that event. I'd be kind of curious myself, anyway, unless you already did something like that.
I did not.
I think it might be curious.
I, I still think putting in bold letters on when they sign up to rent that park, that if there's non-honest wording, and they're from the person renting, that if they do have alcohol, and they don't mention it, why they're renting it, that, that money will be kept. I think that should be put right in the front page.
They're very good about explaining the contracts and pointing out that you signing this, this is a contract for you guys to follow, so.
I can see why Maplewood does, has a no alcohol thing, because you're right in the middle of a playground. You got kids everywhere and stuff like that, so I can see why there's a non-alcohol in the playgrounds in the area.
Is there a way, if we end up having more problems through the middle of, up through May and June and July, that we could revisit this and cut everything off at that point? The, and then get rid of the alcohol completely. The challenge would be if there were reservations made in December and January for August or September.
Okay.
That we're expecting to have, have alcohol. I guess the council could change their minds, they would know we're pulling the plug, and those folks would have to decide if they still want to rent or not.
Right, okay.
At that point, it's probably gonna be pretty hard to find someplace else.
Mm-hmm. That's where you'd want to honor it for the remainder of the year, revisit it, come this time again next year, and say, all right, we're not gonna allow it at all.
Right.
Yeah, and honestly, I mean, if you look at the times that we did have problems, you know, we rented this, I'm trying to find the numbers here. Shoot, sorry, gotta scroll farther up. We rented, between the two parks, or two facilities, I should say, we rented them 180. We rented them 181 times. They were rented out 181 times over the course of the last nine months. And in those nine months, out of 181 instances, we had 11 issues. And most of those issues were people staying late. You know, in a couple instances, yes, there was damage to the facility, but that's it. You know, so I think, you know, grand scheme of things, I think, you know, we're doing pretty good. We're doing good, honestly. So, you know, if you look at just pure numbers, I mean, we're doing pretty good, so.
Was 800 and some dollars was the real reservation cost? And we're charging 350, 400, was it? Something like that? Okay. So it's a little bit higher than I expected as far as what the actual reservation cost is compared to what we're charging.
And we're low.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, we're low. So I mean, it's...
Yeah, that's where I'm saying is that a...
Low and nice facilities.
Yeah, and our cost a little too low if we're subsidizing that much.
How many tables are allowed to line up in Casey Lake down there to, you know, see a banquet hall-style buildings and that?
It goes by how many people you could fit in the building.
I think it said seated as 100 at Casey Lake.
Yep, 215 capacity, 100 seated. So I think there's, what, eight at a table, something like that?
Yeah.
It's a beautiful spot. I was down there for a wedding. It really is a nice area.
It is. It's a great park.
I have some questions. How does the deposit work for our residents?
The, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, they pay the initial fee and the deposit when they reserve. They have the event. We get a report back from the cleaning crew. If it's a Saturday event, we get it on Monday. And as Councilmember Woods pointed out, most of the time, it's no problem, no issue. We do some paperwork to ask the Finance Department to refund the deposit. If there are problems, maybe it needs more investigating, or the cleaning crew found this or that, or there was a police report, then staff discusses it, and we make the call whether to refund part of the deposit or none of the deposit. Ultimately, same measure, Frandl may get involved with that, but usually Sarah and I can figure that out. And so then the refund process just takes time going through the Finance Department and getting the checks written, and they have to be put on a council agenda to get the checks back, and then they're mailed out.
And that's one of the biggest, I don't want to say complaints, but that's one of the biggest complaints I've heard is, you know, the amount of time that it takes to get that refund, that deposit back is... And I understand, I mean, it is what it is, because it has to get, you know, cleaned, and then it has to go through Finance, and then it has to come through us to get, you know, as part of the consent agenda to get reviewed and approved, and so, but, yeah, that's...
And I mean, for what it's worth, they're, we'll say it's a resident, they're paying for it in December. They have to pay for everything right up front. So I mean, they're still going to get it, you know, like I said, it's a big complaint, which I get it, if you want that money back and it's, you know, $300, it's $300 you want back. But, you know, again, it does take a process to go through it as well, so. And I don't know if there's any way we can bypass that, because we still have to approve all the monies.
Yeah, you're cutting checks for that, so.
Yep. And I think people just, and, I mean, this is kind of for the people viewing at home. People just don't understand the process, you know? And that's the process, unfortunately, so, you know, that's the expectation.
We're happy to explain it.
Yeah.
We do get, again, Sarah gets a lot of the questions. Why is my refund taking so long? Well, some of it depends on when the council meetings are, when the packets get, and it's just, it might be three, four weeks.
Yep.
There's, oh, sorry, there's two costs in my mind. There's us, you know, keeping the building up, that's a cost, and then there's also the cleaning cost. Do, I mean, they're two separate things. Is there anybody that charges as far as what the room costs and what cleaning costs, so they can do most of the cleaning themselves out of, you know, as far? Because there's really two separate things. There's the labor cost of cleaning up after them, then there's just the building cost.
Yeah, there, I've heard of places that where you're responsible for that, mopping and everything else when you're done before you close, set the lights off and leave.
Because, you know, I think where it's harder on the city is the cleaning cost is where it's hard for us, because you're, at night, you're doing it with the weekends, you're paying all this, all this different kind of cost for that. So, I mean, is that an option when it comes to the breaking into two sections?
Well, one thing that we have, like Casey, for example, is, you know, there's a maintenance closet that we don't leave unlocked. So we have a bunch of other stuff, and there's fiber in there, and there's other things that we will not them to have access to, but that's where the mops are and the brooms are, and so...
But there are, I mean, so I will say that my family has rented Casey Lake a couple of times for graduations, and there's mops and, or, sorry, a big push broom, like, big, long, I'm trying to think, mop-type broom or whatever, in the kitchen. So, I mean, there's the ability to clean, there's the ability to, you know, clean up after yourselves and things like that. And honestly, I mean, looking at this table, the janitorial cost for Casey Lake is 13 grand a year, so. And for Housy, it's 2,000 a year. So, whereas the actual capital costs of the buildings is the majority of, you know, the cost, the expense, I should say, so.
It's also one of the reasons why we didn't break the days up to have two different rentals, because you have somebody marking up the place, yeah.
Two more questions, if you don't mind. The $2 million insurance policy for the bouncy houses, is that something we've required before? And do the local insurance companies offer that, that plan or policy?
Boy, I don't know either of those. I don't know that anybody's even asked in my time here to even pull one up.
We have had it, I think, just once, but it was a company that came out, blew it up, and they stood by while they had it, so they would have had the insurance. So we haven't had an independent come out and set up their own house, bouncy house, and then take care of that. So it's handled by the owner of it that comes out and sets it up.
Nope, I'm cutting you off. I apologize.
No, it's all good. And then last but not least, I like the idea of all the alcohol stuff. Personally, just because of the size difference, I would be interested in cutting it in half for Housy. I think the, because it's the same as Casey, I think that feels a little bit punitive. I don't know what the other council members think, but other than that, I think it's great, and I really appreciate all the hard work.
I like it to remain the same, only for the sake of, it's alcohol.
It's alcohol.
We're letting you have it.
Yeah.
Just keep the fee.
Right.
I appreciate that. I mean, I get your perspective on that as well, though, because of the building being as small.
We don't want to have anybody overextend their welcome and not pay for what they're using it for. So I think, I think we should keep it.
Really quick question in regards to the contract when, because we're talking about how it is kind of a frustration, and Troy, you made a valid point there, too, that these individuals aren't getting their dollars back immediately. Is it in the contract that states it could take up to four, six weeks? And if it's not, I recommend putting that in there. That way, hey, we've communicated.
And down that point, which I think is a good point, is, you know, the council needs to approve it, so they know that it's not just somebody in the office that has to sign it. We need to go in front of a council for...
And there's twice a year, and this is one example right now.
For a month.
Yeah. National Night Out, and then Voting Day, we don't have those meetings.
I like that idea of council, you know, put it on there, that needs to be approved.
Yeah, we can put that verbiage in there.
Dan, there's a second one. Oh, yeah, it does say two to four weeks for deposit refunds.
They put council, I think, in there, too, because then they know that it's...
I think four to six, then, is probably appropriate, because it could be six, worst-case scenario.
As we put two in there, they're going to think two.
Has it been full this whole summer, then?
Pretty much.
Yeah, that fills up. Residents fill it up fast. I mean, it's...
I know it's a big push at December 1st.
It is. I mean, December 1st, I want, it's, you're going to be put on hold.
Really? By that, they'll call them that early?
Oh, yeah.
They know a wedding or graduation there?
I mean, for what it's worth, Troy said you could use it for graduation. If you know you're having a grad party, your house isn't big enough, you're going to throw it at one of these locations.
We were thinking of our son's wedding on the Valentines, but it was too close for December 1st to find out you're not getting it, so we moved on.
Especially around graduation, you know, during the summer, you know, early spring or late spring to early summer, it's packed every weekend.
There was a wedding there just, maybe last weekend, I think there was, on a Sunday. Yeah. It's cool. They, I mean, it's used. It's used a lot. And that's something to consider in the future, too. I mean, depending on, as we're looking at these costs, and Mayor, as you called out, just with the operating piece of everything, I think if you increase these significantly right away, I mean, it's a deterrent, but you slowly go, and we continue on this process, I think we'll get to that point where we're, we'll be comfortable.
And I will say that, you know, just because I just thought about it, I know that one of the facilities that, you know, we're comparing to is the Maplewood facility at, I'm trying to think of the park.
Wakefield?
Yeah, Wakefield. They have, like, shelter facilitators sitting there, you know, available. They have staff on hand there at the time, too. So if, you know, there's problems, if there's questions, there's somebody there to help, whereas we don't. So that's something else to consider. Not that I think we should pursue that, but, I mean, that's another, you know, thing to say, you're responsible for this. You've got to take care of everything, so.
All right. Good conversations.
Yeah.
So again, the request for council is to approve the new revised fees and then the revised rental policy, which I just made a couple of edits on the screen. I don't know if you can see them about the deposits.
Thank you. Can I get a motion for revised fees, please?
I'll make a motion.
Councilmember Schwer?
I'll second.
Second, Councilmember McKenzie. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Great, thank you. Next up, go ahead.
Next one?
All right, sorry.
Second one is the review.
The policy.
Policy review.
Revised park policy.
Yep, revised.
And just, again, for clarity, I don't know if it's on your screen, highlighted in yellow.
Don't you read it? They don't, oh, there we go. Additional deposit and fees for, okay.
And then I said the city usually refunds deposits within, I'm going to say, three to four weeks.
Okay. Council approval, too, you're going to put in there?
I can add that.
Yeah, please do, because...
And I would extend it to the six, the six weeks.
Yep. Four to six.
Just depending on, yeah, do the four to six, depending on time of year.
Better have it soon, yep. Four to six with council. Council needs to approve the...
I'll make that change.
Perfect. Can I get a motion on that, please?
So moved.
So moved. Councilmember Schwer?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Woods. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Appreciate it. Thanks, Kent.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so next up is updates from city management departments. Don't want to rain on anybody's parade there, but I'll take the Historical Society that we were invited there yesterday.
Take all our thunder.
Yeah, I know it. So they do that once a year, different formats, to where we've been set up as a panel, to where they can just ask questions, and this year, we kind of did it where it was just kind of social time, and people could come around and just ask their questions of whatever they had, so it was kind of nice. And it was attended rather well, too. It was probably, what, 20, 25 people there, maybe? Electric has their new energy kits out. They brought some more up to City Hall here. And actually, after Halloween, they'll be starting to give out the Christmas decorations again, or Christmas lights. So they'll be available at the front desk over at Finance. They're working with power engineers, working on doing some update on the control panels at the substation. Some more to come on that. Community development, they've been working on the fee schedule and rate schedule, collecting that information from the different departments and where they're at before we kind of all meet and discuss all those. Of course, Jenny's been busy with, got open enrollment coming up and still working out the, what they need to do with the Paycom. Police, they will be out putting out information for the winter, well, we'll put it out, for the winter parking notifications, so that'll start on November 1st. Public Works has been busy. They're already getting the plows on the trucks, getting them ready to go. I think they had some flurries up north here. Of course, they're busy with the student-built house, so that'll be progressing here relatively shortly. Road project is going well. It looks like they pulled the last of the people who were up temporary water today, and still working out the finals on, like, storm sewer and ongoing work. And they've also been busy with hydrant flushing with the fire department. That usually takes, what, three, four weeks, and they flush the whole system out.
Do we do that ourselves, or does that...
We do that.
Ha. Hope my wife's listening, because she told me we hired it out. Somebody else was doing it.
No.
I won one. I'm just, I just want on record that I...
Brian's out there all by himself.
Yeah, so I should know. They hired somebody to do that. I said, no, I think we're doing it ourselves, so, put that down.
There we go. Check. Fire Department, they got their, finally got their new truck in service, so they were waiting on, they took it up to the chief's meeting, the yearly annual meeting up in Duluth, and now it's back and in service, so ready to use. They have their EMS refresher training tomorrow, and they're also doing hydrant flow testing this week, so they're staying busy. That's all we got.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Any updates?
Yes, Parks and Rec has their meeting tomorrow night here in Council Chamber, 6:30.
Great, thank you.
EDA won't meet until December.
All right.
Arts and Culture met, hasn't met since our last meeting, so.
Thank you.
I was not able to make the planning commission meeting at the beginning of this month, and just wanted to say thank you today for filling in my shoes. And the next planning commission meeting will be on November 6th.
Great. Any general business from anybody up here?
Yeah, I'm sorry I couldn't make it to last night's event with the Historical Society. I enjoy going to those, unfortunately. I had a prior engagement, so those that were in attendance, thank you for being there. I'm sorry I couldn't be there. And that whole community, they just, they're incredible people. I, because we are going to be missing the first meeting in November, I think it's important to bring up that we have an election out there. We have an election for two new school board members, Justin Madoff and Sam Rosemark. I wish them the best as they run against each other for the position. I also think it's important that I'd like our community to review the Capital Projects Levy for Technology on the ISD622.org site for some more information pertaining to it. But a few points to take with everyone in the community is that the school district is proposing a $2 million per year levy for 10 years, amounting in the total of $20 million, and that will begin in 2026. So please educate yourselves a little bit further in regards to that. Go to the ISD622.org website, and I encourage everyone to go out and vote.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else?
I attended the meeting last night, the historical group. It was very, very well put together. Joe Stallman did a nice job, and nice to see all the turnout of folks that come in. And I also want to invite all the council and the staff. That November 2nd, Police Confederation or the Police Foundation will be having their pancake breakfast at the Legion from 8:30 to 1 o'clock. Adults, 12 bucks, eight bucks for the juniors and free kids. There's going to be silent auctions, raffles, drawings, and the police officers will be flipping burger, flipping pancakes. That ought I see. I have to see that to believe it.
Oh, you can eat pancakes?
Oh, you can eat, yeah.
Chubby man likes that news.
And, uh, mac sausages will be up there cooked, too, so we got to go.
No kidding. That's my anniversary. I'll take the bride there for 34 years. That's what we'll take her. Yeah, exactly. I'll take you out special this year, I'll tell her.
I've got nothing.
Yes, I, I'm actually very excited to announce, the North St. Paul Christmas Tree Project is going to happen again this year. If it's not something you're familiar with, I highly suggest you do some research, to me, this is one of the hidden gems of North St. Paul, and I couldn't be more prouder of Rachel Thompson, one of our residents, for putting this on.
Great.
What's it called, how do you find it?
It is on the North St. Paul Friends and Page, it is on the North St. Paul Community Page, and it is, the official title is the NSP Christmas Tree Project.
Great, thank you.
And those pages are on Facebook.
Yes. Great. I was at the, also the Historical Society, and somebody mentioned, which I kinda got a little chuckle, about the newsletter, she said, sometimes I think there's just too much in there. So, it's so nice to hear that for a change, so as far as we're keeping up, we're, that's the only, you know, way we can get news out, so just wanted to tell, tell Ava, she just does a great job, and, you know, it's, it's great to have that, 'cause they're, they're doing so much organization up there, they're trying to get through all the, the old newsletters from Lily and everything else, and they're taking our digital ones and printing them, I think, once a month, because there's so much info, information in there, but they've really, really done a great job with that facility, and Sue, of course, doing the building part of it, they got the outside, the landscaping, which was helped by the city, so that was greatly appreciated, the building was painted, so they got that done by, by some workers, and also Elaine with all the knowledge she brings, and just a good group of people, and they, board members elections last night, so they got two new, two people on, as members on the board, so it was, it was a great turnout, so.
Shout out to Sue for the apple squares.
Oh, yeah, I still got one in the refrigerator at home, 'cause Chris hasn't eaten it yet, so that's fair game, what, twenty-four hour rule, isn't it fair game then? Nice, so I'll do that. Yep, so November fourth, no, like Councilmember Schwer said, that's election, so please look accordingly and check it over, and then our next meeting is November eighteenth. So everybody have a great month, it'll be, till we see you next, and can I have a call for a German, please?
Some of.
Some of, Councilmember Schwer.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Woods, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Order, please, roll call.
Excuse me, Commissioner Norby?
Here.
Commissioner Woods?
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Here.
Commissioner Schwer?
Here.
Chair Moggi?
Here. I'm the chair, there we go, all right, items.
All right, so we have the approval of.
Well, thank you very much, approval of the sale of the student-built house located at two thousand seven Sixth Street North, so looking for resolution on that.
All right. And we went over, you gonna get the little highlights, or?
I certainly can.
Were people that didn't catch the first part during the workshop?
Yeah, so it's the conveyance of the HRA property, has no relationship to the comprehensive municipal plan, and reviewed by the Planning Commission of the acquisition of the HRA property is hereby dispensed with, being that this is just the sale of it, the conveyance of the HRA property is hereby approved, and staff are authorized and directed to execute all documents and take all appropriate measures to convey the HRA property.
All right, thank you, can I get a motion?
Some of.
Some of, Councilmember Schwer, second, Councilmember Woods, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There we go. All right, our next one is to be determined for the HRA, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Some of.
Some of, Councilmember Norby, second, Councilmember McKenzie, I, I got him out there twice, you see the look he gave me the last time? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.